I have ordered the Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting for April 24th, 2014. Welcome, everybody. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance and the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Louisiana, where the nation, under God, the invisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mastro as a symbol of perfect friendship among the county commissioners.
You have the agenda before you. Can we get an approval of the meeting agenda if there's no changes need to come?
So moved. Second.
Motion is second to approve the regular meeting agenda. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Public input. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question and answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any individual who would like to discuss an item in more depth may request to be placed on a future agenda. Request forms are available in the County Manager's office. Just see, Denisha, if you need one. At this time, we'll stand for public input if there's any. Please, sir. State your name for the record, please.
My name is Paul Kenny. I'm with Sapien Fire in Lake Roberts. I had a chance to take a look at the draft of the fire restriction ordinance. And as I understand it, I have a number of businesses, private businesses, up at the dwellings in Lake Roberts area, which do campfires a lot. And as I understand it, since none of them have what I would call agency-built fire rings, that campfires on private property, particularly private businesses, would be banned with this. I know it's not a question and answer period, but that's the way I understand it. If that's incorrect, I'd like to know later, please.
What I would suggest you do is get with Randy, via...
I've been there.
Okay. Because I'm not able to answer that question today.
I appreciate that.
Okay. Any further public input? Seeing none, we'll move on. Public hearing for consideration of fireworks proclamation. This time, we have a discussion regarding consideration of proclamation declaring extreme severe drought conditions, imposition, and fireworks restrictions. Is there anybody that would like to speak on that? Seeing none, we'll move on. So we approve or disapprove a proclamation declaring extreme of severe drought conditions, imposition of fireworks restrictions.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make motion that we approve of the proclamation declaring extreme for severe drought conditions and imposition of fireworks restrictions.
Second. Your motion is proper second to approve the proclamation declaring extreme of severe drought conditions, imposition of fireworks restrictions. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Public hearing for consideration for a fire hazard emergency ordinance, ordinance number 1401. Discussion regarding consideration of emergency ordinance declaring a fire hazard emergency and enacting measures to decrease the county's risk of injury to persons, property, substantial financial loss to the county grant and its residents as a result of fire. Is there anybody that would like to discuss the ordinance 1401?
Mr. Chairman, I can make motion to approve ordinance number 1401 as described as you as the judge described.
Second. Your motion is second to approve ordinance 1401. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Give it within minutes. Approve or disapprove April 10th, 2014's regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make motion that we approve the April 10th, 2014 regular meeting minutes.
Second. Your motion is proper second to approve April 10th's regular meeting minutes. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Financial reports. I had a expenditure report that was kind of normal, so can we get a motion to approve the April 21st, 2014 expenditure report?
Motion to approve April the 22nd, 2014 expenditure report.
Not second?
It's actually the 21st.
That's okay.
Was it 24?
22nd.
I'm sorry?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove the... You know what, John, go ahead. I'd like going over that one again. Just...
The analysis?
The analysis.
Hit the high point?
Hit the high lot.
The cash flow analysis dated March 31st, 2014. We started the year July 1st, 2013 at $2,451,424. With revenues, expenditures, and transfers through March 31st, 2014, we have a balance as of $2,016,793 at March 31st. With our projected revenues, transfers, and expenditures through June 30th, 2014 of $1,066,430, leaves a cash balance at June 30th, 2014 of $2,183,223. Less the required reserve of $2,105,342, leaves a surplus at June 30th, 2014 of $77,881. On page two is our revenues. We've collected 61.72% of the budgeted revenues as of March 31st. On the third page is our transfers. We've done 2.43% of the budgeted transfers out of the general fund as of March 31st. The next is the road fund. We started the year July 1st, 2013 at $267,657. With revenues, expenditures, and transfers through March 31st, 2014, we have a balance of -431,169. With projected revenues and expenditures through June 30th, 2014 of a positive $563,874, leaves a cash balance at June 30th, 2014 of $132,705. Less the required cash reserve of $130,935, leaves a surplus at June 30th, 2014 of $1,770. The next is the corrections fund. As of July 1st, 2013, we started the year with $407. With revenues, expenditures, and transfers through March 31st, our cash balance at March 31st is -1,380,169. With projected revenues, expenditures, and transfers through June 30th, 2014 of a positive $1,385,038, leaves a cash balance at June 30th, 2014 of $4,868.
And then, Mr. Chairman? Can I get a motion to approve the cash flow analysis?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the cash flow analysis report from March 2014.
Second. Your motion is second to approve the cash flow analysis report for March 2014. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. This time, Mike or Joseph, or who's going to handle the... Do you want to just... We just want to move that down the...
Yeah, we can...
When we see him, we'll...
Until they show up.
We'll just move it down until it comes. Okay, then we'll move to item E. Approve or disapprove proclamation declaring the week of May 18th through 24th, 2014 as Emergency Medical Services Week? Denisha.
Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas, emergency medical services is a vital public service. And whereas President Gerald Ford first honored the important service in 1974. And whereas the members of emergency's medical services teams at Hula Regional Medical Center, EMS, are ready and able to provide life-saving care to this in need 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas the emergency medical service system consists of emergency physician, nurses, medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, first responders, educators, administrators, and others. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas Grant County is fortunate to have the award-winning team of emergency medical professionals at Hula Regional Medical Center providing care to its residents and visitors. And now therefore be it resolved that the Grant County Board of Commission do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through 24th, 2014 as Emergency Medical Service Week.
Thank you, Denisha.
Approve proclamation declaring the week of May 18th through 24th, 2014 as Emergency Medical Service Week.
That probably second. Your motion is second to approve the proclamation declaring the week of May 18th through 24th as Emergency Medical Service Week. Is there any discussion on that motion? I know there's some emergency medical providers back there. You guys know anything saying? Maybe James? That means now.
I don't know how that works.
You've been two weeks off and you already forgot?
Yeah. You know, that goes... It's like, I got the button. First of all, thank you very much for honoring this service. You know, it's an often forgotten service that people don't value until they need it. And the crew that you see here in the audience is a very small part of the commitment that people are making in this community and all over this county. And we even have the night crew. The two young ladies that have joined us were on all night last night. And they are professionals. They go to your home and they'll provide a lot of the same care that you just get when you get to the emergency room. And they'll start it at your home and give you a safe ride to the hospital. So I appreciate your recognition of the service that they provide in the week.
Thank you, James. If you'll just stay right there and bring your crew up, we'll vote on this and come down and lay out, take a picture. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Could have to bring our people to take off and forget it.
Thank you.
Do we call Mike and see what he says?
You've got to treat these guys good because, you know, when you're laying your back not feeling so good, they're in charge.
It's no big deal. We can do it until you... Approve or disapprove proclamation declaring May 6th as Give Grande Day. Denisha.
Whereas Grant County is blessed by numerous nonprofit organizations which provide invaluable services such as sheltering our homeless, feeding our hungry, and caring for our youth. And whereas Give Grande New Mexico Day, May 6th, 2014, is the first community-wide giving event hosted by the Coalition of New Mexico Community Foundations. Community Foundation of Southern New Mexico Albuquerque Community Foundation, Santa Fe Community Foundation, New Mexico Community Foundation, Talos Community Foundation, and locally by the Grant County Community Foundation, online at www.inforgivegrandeneuMexico.org. And whereas Give Grande New Mexico Day shall grow the spirit of giving and raise as much money as possible for the nonprofits in Grant County. And whereas through the Coalition of New Mexico Community Foundations and its community partners, Give Grande New Mexico Day shall inspire the public to support our nonprofit organizations on this one day, May 6th. Now therefore, at the request of Chairman Brett Caston, be it proclaimed by the Commission of the County of Grant that May 6th, 2014, is the first ever Grande, Give Grande New Mexico Day. And be it further proclaimed that for all citizens, it is the official day of providing financial support for all of the cause that continue to move our city forward. In the name of and by the authority vested in the Commission of the County of Grant.
Okay. Thank you, Denisha. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve proclamation declaring May 6th as Give Grande New Mexico Day.
Second. Your motion is proper second to proclaim May 6th as Give Grande Day. Is there anybody any discussion on that motion? Come on up to the mic. Let me see you guys. So...
I'm Lucy Tully. I'm on the board of the Grant County Community Foundation.
Okay.
And I'd like to... Oh, also go ahead. That's okay. And I'm Lucy Whitmarsh, and I'm representing Silver City Main Street, which is one of the participants in the Give Grande program.
Thank you.
Close the white button. We'd like to thank the Board of County Commissioners for recognizing and for this proclamation for Give Grande New Mexico. Reiterating what was said, May 6th is Give Grande New Mexico, the state's first online giving to support our local nonprofit organizations. The Volunteer Center and 35 more Grant County nonprofits that do so much to make Grant County great. Show your support. Give Grande at www... I'm sorry, try again. www.givgrandemn.org. And give Grande to the nonprofits of your choice. This is all sponsored by the Grant County Community Foundation, and we thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Is there any further discussion? Just stay right there. We'll be down in a second. All those in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is contracts agreement. Approve or disapprove agreement number A1410. Agreement with the New Mexico Children, Youth, and Families Department for services through the Juvenile Justice Continuum Program. We went over this on Tuesday.
Sheriff? Yeah. Move to approve agreement number A1410. Next second. Motion is second to approve A1410. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next item on the agenda is contracts agreement. Approve or disapprove agreement number A1411. Memorandum of Understanding between the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the New Mexico County of Grant. This was a memorandum of understanding that we've asked, that we asked to have added to the agenda so we could be at the table on the... on the rule issue with the National... with NEPA and the Final Rule 63FR 1752.
See if they have any questions, or if not, we can get a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve agreement number A1411.
Second. Your motion is second to approve A1411. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, yes.
I would just like to point out to the Commissioners that as part of this memorandum on page 5, it does make a statement that even though Grant County has entered into this, it does not expressly, does not waive any procedure or substantive challenges it may have against the service. Just because you're going to be sitting at the table with this group doesn't mean you can't come back and challenge the EIS if you don't agree with it when it's done. I just want to point that out, that you are not giving up that right.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Resolutions. Approve or disapprove resolution R1418, authorizing the transfer of Grant County parcel number 3-070-100-293-378. One point acres, more or less, to Freeport Mac Land Chino Mines Company. Abby, can you go over that there quickly?
Mr. Chairman, this is the property exchange that the county's been working on for a while with Freeport. And just a brief description of what the transaction is planned to be is that we will be exchanging a one-acre parcel for a three-acre parcel from Freeport. And the reason that we want that three-acre parcel is so that we can put a main station on for the Santa Rita Fire Department. And also, as part of the agreement, we will be putting in a road, not a...
And another two acres?
Yeah.
So they're giving us two acres basically to put in a new road to the cemetery?
Right.
Kind of like an even trade to me.
And there is an attached agreement that I'm working on with the attorney for Freeport. But I wanted to let you know that we asked the assessor, Ms. Guthrie, to do an appraisal of the pieces of property that we're going to exchange. And initially, we had estimated that the value of the parcels per acre would be about $10,000. It's actually a little lower, around $8,000. So I just wanted to let you know that it's a little bit lower than what we expected, but not too far.
Okay. Thank you.
Really didn't change the circumstances of the terms of the agreement.
Okay. Thank you very much, yes.
Approve resolution number... Motion to approve resolution R1418.
Next second. Your motion is second to approve R1418. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Bids. Approve or disapprove bid number B1305, Tyrone Volunteer Fire Department Main Station Edition.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is... We had the bid opening for the Tyrone Volunteer Fire Department Edition. It'll be adding on a training room, some restrooms, to make sure that they can continue to maintain their main station status. They're at the town side of Tyrone. This is the station we're talking of. The bid results, they were open on April 16th. We had six bidders. The bidders were Sacotone Construction, Custom Steelworks, Havens Construction, Miraloma Inc., Timberland Construction, and TFC Construction. Sacotone Construction was the low bidder at $249,8178. The estimate, I believe, was around $250,000 is what the budget was. So it came in right under the budget. And so... No. So... And so the architect has reviewed them, and he feels that they have met all the requirements and recommends the Commission award the project to Sacotone Construction. And then we will enter into an agreement with them to start that process going. They've already gone to New Mexico Finance Authority and received a loan approval for this. So this project will be ready to go once we get this done.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve bid number B1305 to Sacotone Construction for the Tyrone Volunteer Fire Department Main Station Edition.
Second. Motion is proper second to approve Sacotone Construction as the contractor of record for the Tyrone Volunteer Fire Department. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. This time, I'll ask for motion to recess the Board of County Commissioners.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Call back to order the Grant County Board of Commissioners. They, at this time, will stand for county reports. Sheriff, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I just want to remind the public about Saturday, April 26th, in regard to the drug takeback, which will be happening at Walgreens from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. This is to encourage the public to turn in any of their prescription, medications, or any, anything that they want to get rid of. That way, don't hit out on the street. It'll be there. No questions asked. They can drop it off there, you know, at a box. There'll be two officers standing by there at Walgreens to take that in. So that's all I have unless you have any questions.
Any questions for the sheriff? Seeing none, we'll move on. Robby, got anything, guys?
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. I just wanted to remind everyone that May 6th, early and absentee voting begin in our office. Our hours are 8 to 5, Monday through Friday. May 17th, early voting begins at our satellite over in there with the community center. They open on Saturday from 9 to 6, and then Tuesday through Saturday, 9 to 6. We have absentee applications can be requested. Call our office. You can come by our office and pick one up, or you can go into the website and print one from there. If you have any questions, please call us, (574) 0042.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, after you now. I don't see anything to add. No? John?
Just wanted to bring up, we did receive from the jail that the officers weren't all able to make it together. So they'll, we'll put that on a future meeting.
At what?
For that. And then just reminding everybody again, the bicyclists are in town. Please watch out for them. They're going to be all over. The big teams will start arriving. And so you'll have big groups of riders riding on the sides of the road until race day and then race day. They do the rolling roadblocks to protect the riders more. But just pay attention. This is a time when a lot of people are in and kids are riding their bikes too that want to be like the adults that ride around. So you really have to watch out for the younger children because they're learning. They're not as stable as everybody else. And so if people could just pay extra attention.
Thank you, Sheriff. Mr. Sheriff? I just want to thank these, the people that come in for these bike races and ask them and invite them to spend a lot of money here in Grant County because we got to take advantage of these type of organizations coming in in town. And that's pretty much all I've got for today anyways.
Didn't we have a great race this weekend at Western?
This weekend?
Yeah, it's a fun thing to go to. I'd like for everyone to go up there and watch those guys. And I don't know if they're going to have a local race this year or not, but it's always fun to watch. This commissioner was a pusher on the very first race. So I always enjoy a pusher and pushing the car, okay?
I don't want to try to get the wrong idea.
But it's been a busy time for me. I continue, along with others, to work on the Adult Suck and Subuse Continuum of Care. Of course, we had some issues with roads and lights this last, since the last time I reported. And that went very well. I'm very pleased with that so far. Also, Randy Villa has been working with us as far as Corey Caminos and the bus route to Cliff and Hila. We're still looking into that. I just gave Mr. Craft a copy of his survey that he's going to be giving folks out there so we can get a better idea of what their needs and wants and wishes are. Also, been working, just starting, along with the group, on the animal control ordinance. And I just want to reiterate the fire restrictions, folks. If it's welding, grinding, a fire, or whatever, we got to be so careful. Be careful where you drive your vehicles. Catalytic converters, we know, can start a fire. And so be careful as far as that's concerned. And then, of course, just other meetings that we have that, staying involved in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next week, I'll be attending a meeting with ACI on Wednesday, and then the NMAC meetings on Thursday and Friday next week. So I got a busy week. So at this time, I'll take... Oh, yes.
I just wanted to bring up, I thought of it as we were talking of the road issues. The bridge project on 90 South is getting closer to starting there. So we've been working with Department of Transportation that they'll use truck bypass road to... if they're gonna have a local race this year or not, but, uh, it's always fun to watch. Uh, this commissioner was a pusher on the very first race, so I always enjoy a pusher and pushing the car, okay? Uh, I don't know if you shared with your other ideas, but, uh, it's, it's been a busy time for me, uh, I continue, uh, along with others to work on the Adult Suckers Abuse Continuum of Care. Of course, we had some issues with roads and lights, uh, this last, since the last time I reported and that went very well. I'm very pleased with that so far. Uh, also Randy Villa has been working with us as far as Cory Caminos and the bus route to Cliff and Hila, we're still, uh, looking into that. I just gave, uh, Mr. Craft a copy of a survey that, uh, he's gonna be giving folks out there so we can get a better idea of what their needs and wants and wishes are. Uh, also been working, uh, they're just starting along with a group on the Animal Control Ordinance and, uh, I just wanna reiterate the fire restrictions, folks. If it's welding, grinding, a fire or whatever, we gotta be so careful. Be careful when you drive your vehicles, catalytic converters we know can start a fire, and so be careful as far as that's concerned. And of course, uh, just other meetings that we have that, uh, staying involved in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next week I'll be attending, uh, a meeting with A C I on Wednesday and then the N Mac meetings on Tues, um, Thursday and Friday next week, so I got a busy week, so at this time I'll take, oh, yes.
I just wanted to bring up, I thought of it as we were talking of the road issues, um, the bridge project on Ninety South is getting closer to starting there, so, um, we've been working with Department of Transportation that they'll use truck bypass road, um, to do that, uh, Mr. Moore's gone out and chip sealed the road to get it ready, but, um, they, the department has come to us and said they will maintain it during the construction period and when they're done, they're going to do an overlay on that road for us and bring it up to standards, um, so it's turned back over to us, 'cause all the extra traffic that'll be on it, so. So that project will be starting soon. I don't know the exact start date, they haven't given it to us, but they're getting close. They're finalizing everything to go ahead and replace that, so the bridge out of town will be out of commission for a while while they build the new bridge.
Okay, I do have something else I just remembered also. Um, there's gonna be a fundraiser on Saturday for Martin Terran, uh, well, he, he was tragically killed about twenty-two years ago and now they're going to put together, they're trying to raise money to put together some scholarships for area, area kids and, uh, his dream was that fifty years old was to, to retire, he'd be turning fifty this month, so they're, they're having this bike run to raise money and there'll be some festivities over at, uh, over at the Brown Derby in Santa Clara and it'll be going on all day and, uh, you know, it is a great family, I still remember, it was really tragic, he was one of my lieutenants in the National Guard and he was a great person and he was killed as long as, and as well as his two daughters over at the bowling alley in Las Cruces about twenty-two years ago, um, so, but, uh, they are trying to get this fundraiser going and they're gonna try and make this an annual event, so anyone that can go out there and support that family, um, I, I'm sure they would really appreciate it, the, the Terran family's a great family. Down there.
Excuse me. Thanks, Mr. Sheriff. At this time I'll take a motion to move in executive session. Second. Your motion is proper second, move in executive session. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye. All right, Rob, can you give a roll call for a moment?
Commissioner, are you aware?
Yes, I am. Chairman Caston, are you aware of the, the, the executive session?
I am.
Commissioner Ramos, are you aware that you will be entering into...
Yes, I am.
Okay. Uh, the matter on executive session today will be limited, personnel matters, discussion regarding the county manager's goals and job performance and we will adjourn directly from the, uh, executive session. There'll be no, no action on any items after that.